This conference will now be recorded.
And yesterday we talked about what baseline configuration and at what stage we will be doing it? Either at client level or at company code level or at country level. Now, second point, what we'll try to understand is basic business processes. When we talk about basic business process, we mean the actual key processes within your SAP FICO. Let's say GL, AP, AR, asset accounting, taxation, cash, bank and so on. And yesterday when we talked about the initial configuration of any project, first we will be doing baseline configuration. Once baseline configuration is completed, what we will do, we will do business process configuration. Now here, what business processes do we have in SAP FICO? And what is what initially we have to know at least few basic points. So that once we are on the topic, we will be able to explore and experiment more different, different scenarios. Now, within basic business processes in SAP FICO, first thing, let me write as general ledger. Second one, I'll put as accounts payable. Third one, I'll put accounts receivable. Fourth one, fixed assets. Fifth one, taxation. I'll say sales and purchase. And here withholding tax. Sixth one, cash accounting. Seventh one, bank accounting. And eighth one, integrations with other modules. Any other key point or key topic to be added here?
Reporting.
Yeah, we can also put reporting. Okay, assume that these are the nine key elements that we have to initially understand about SAP FICO. Later on, in each point, in each topic, we will have to experiment. We will have to work with different, different business processes scenarios. Now, in order to do this, we need to have three points. Point number one is here. Okay, so I'll say consulting work. How you will be doing consulting work in these areas? First one, you will have business requirement. First you will get the business requirement. Based on the business requirement, we will be doing configuration. Based on the configuration, we will be creating master data. Based on master data, we will be creating transaction data. Based on the transaction data, we will be generating various kind of reports. Is this correct? Okay, initially you will have to get the business requirement. What is that the exact requirement that your client has? In order to perform their business operations, business activities with respect to each of these sub modules within finance. Once you get the requirement, based on the requirement, you have to do the relevant configuration, not complete configuration. Only the relevant configuration to meet your business requirement is to be performed. Once you do the business configuration, you have to create master records. Once master data is created, you have to create day-to-day business transactions. Once transactions are posted, generate the reports, ensure that everything is in line. The data is accurate according to the actual transaction that is processed. Now, in this way, you have to look at the system right from the beginning. Anything that you want to configure in the system, do not configure it straightforward. Always assume, always assume that what is your requirement? Whatever you assume, let's feel that that is the business requirement and see how you will achieve it in the SAP system. Okay? Now, let's say when we talk about GL. When we talk about GL, what will be the initial business requirement? When you talk about business requirement, it is all about current business process. Is that correct? When we talk about business requirement, we mean current business process. How your client is currently working with general ledger accounting in their day-to-day business? And how they want to use it in SAP? Whether they want to use the similar way that they are currently using or they're expecting any betterments, any improvements from SAP. Now, they will be telling you that this is how we are currently using our GL module. And these kind of problems you are facing in our existing system. In SAP, we are expecting these areas to be automated. At this level, we want to have controls, we want to have different kind of reporting and all. You have to note down all their expectations, requirements from SAP with respect to each of the module. Based on that, you have to think through whether these processes are standard functionalities of SAP? Or we need to make any customization to meet these requirements? Based on that, you will have to initiate your configuration. Remember, when you do configuration, you are not going to do the complete configuration of GL module. We will be configuring only to the extent of your client business requirement. Considering this, when we are practicing, we are not supposed to configure or make settings completely before we test it. Always first configure only the basic version of any particular module. If you're talking about GL, first you configure only the basic GL module so that you will be able to create an accounting entry with debit and credit. Later on, think about different, different scenarios. If I want to pass entries like this, what settings will I be doing or can I directly pass the entries? If we are not going in that way, if you are configuring straight away everything on the system, whatever you try to do will work. But this is not the real case. Certain things will not work in your actual project because those functionality related configuration is not maintained. Because that was not part of the requirement. In short, you'll have to remember two terms. One is in scope, the other one is out of scope. Okay, whatever the business process, whatever the business requirement that you have received is part of in scope. Anything in scope, you will have to deliver to the customer. Anything out of scope, you will not be working on it. Straight away, we will tell to the business that this is not part of our initial scope. Please let us know if you want to implement or if you want to have this business process or this scenario also to be included. Anything which is not discussed will not be configured in the system. And whatever we are discussing, we will be documenting it and this document will be approved by the client. Nothing less than what is discussed, nothing more than what is discussed. Exactly whatever we have discussed, we have to deliver. Okay?
Is this some realization based or business blueprint?
This is a business blueprint, not realization. Business blueprint will clearly state what is in scope, what is out of scope. Because whatever is there on the business blueprint, we are going to do it on the system. Okay, now let's say we'll talk about GL. When we talk about GL, this is your consulting workflow. First thing, when you want to configure GL, should we directly start configuring the GL or we have to have a requirement?
Have a requirement.
Right, we must have a requirement. Now, when you are working in a project, you will get the detailed requirement from your business. Your client or your end users will tell you this is how we are working on GL currently. When they are talking about GL process, they will be talking about only these three elements. These are the three elements that they will be talking about. What master data they are, how they are creating their masters, how they are posting the transaction, how they are generating reports, what kind of reports they are doing. Now, considering this, you'll have to decide what configuration is to be made to meet these requirements. Now, initially when we practice to create any transaction in the GL module. Let's say you want to work on GL module. In GL module, what we will be doing, we will be creating master records first, agree?
Yes, sir.
First thing that is done in GL module is creation of master data. Let's say we'll talk about GL master data. When you are creating GL master data, GL master data is created based on one baseline configuration setting. What is that setting?
Account group, sir.
So that is, that is part of which setting?
Chart of baseline.
Chart of account. It is part of your chart of account. Before you create GL master data, you have to ensure your chart of account is properly created. When we say chart of account is properly created, we have more than thirty account groups. Not only the four account groups, you must have minimum thirty account groups. Fixed asset, current asset, cash, bank, investments, your accounts receivable, advances likewise, you must have created minimum thirty account groups. And when you are creating GL master data, how you are going to create your GL master? So you have three levels of creating GL master data.
I am this.
One is GL at chart of account level. Second one,
Company code.
Company code level.
GL at company code level. Third one, GL at
Central.
One is chart of account level, one is country level?
Yes.
Now, what are the transaction codes for this? At chart of account level, what is the transaction code? Starts from FS, everything starts from FS only.
FSP zero.
Last one is FS double zero, it's central. Not country level, it's central.
Correct, last one is GL at central level. This is FS double zero. And at chart of account level?
FSP zero.
FSP zero. At company code level, FS?
NG.
S zero.
Zero.
FS S zero, are these T codes correct?
Yes, sir.
Right, now we have to remember whenever you are creating GL account, you have three levels. Every GL account is created either at chart of account level or at company code level or at central level. When you are creating at central level, your company code segment is created along with the chart of account level. Now, these two together forms a central GL account. Okay, chart of account level plus company code level is nothing but your central level GL account. If I'm talking about chart of account level, chart of account level GL will not reflect in your company code. Okay, whatever the GL that you create at chart of account level, this GL is not going to be reflected on your company code GL list. Unless you create that GL account at company code level. Okay, now when you are in any project, let's say if you are implementing any project, if you are doing any rollout, how do you create the GL accounts? This is common question that you get if you say you are working on any implementation project. They might ask you, how do you define chart of account? And how do you create GL masters? Because we know the fact that in any real environment, you are going to have thousand plus GL accounts.
Yes, sir.
Right, right from the beginning, feed in your mind that in any organization, in any company code, you are going to have thousand GL accounts minimum. No surprise, one company code may have two thousand GLs, three thousand GL accounts also. So when we know that there will be one thousand GL accounts, this is your first step before creating any transaction in SAP? Correct, GL master is needed, it is mandatory before we create any transaction on SAP system. Now, for practicing purpose, we may be creating two, three GL accounts or hardly ten, twenty GL accounts. That is fine at the initial stage. When you are first configuring, maybe one company code, two company codes maximum. Okay, one or two company codes only if you create a few GL accounts and if you pass some entries, that is accepted, but after that, never do that. Okay, initially, whatever the practice that you are doing for the first, second company code is only to get ourselves familiar with the system, not to get confused with the screens and all. It's only a testing. So your first company code, second company code, do not consider it as your practice, it is your testing. Clear? Your testing, you are getting familiar with the screens, transaction codes, sequence, flow. Once you have tested with one company code or two company codes, second time, we are going to do it properly in your actual company code. Even when I tell you, I am going to show you in the similar way. First, I will show you in some test company code, some dummy company code, only the basic business process, basis, basic configuration. So that you will understand what transaction codes we are going to work on, what screens we are going to look at. After that, we are going to list out one clear business requirement along with accounting entries. Then we will configure it in detail in our actual company code with step-by-step screenshots. Right, in one go, I cannot say it is completed, in one go, you cannot say I have learnt. Am I correct? It is practically not possible. The first time, nothing is clear, first time, everything will give you lot of confusions, lot of question marks. That is why first time, whatever we do, we look at the system in a generic way to get familiar. Immediate, the next day, we are going to work on it with practical, full-fledged configuration with one business scenario. Now, considering this GL at central level. Now, in general, when you are in any project, at what level you are going to create GL master first? Let's say we are working in any implementation project. We are working for an implementation project. Now, your client has given you one thousand two hundred GL accounts to be created. Okay, point number one, one thousand two hundred GLs to be created, I'll put it down. And three company codes to be implemented. Okay, you have one thousand two hundred GL accounts that has been finalized by your client. And your client is going to set up three company codes. How you are going to proceed with GL master creation? Are you going to create GL in FS double zero screen or FSP zero, FS S zero? What will be the approach?
Sir, we'll do it FS double zero.
We'll create a chart of, chart of account level and then extend it.
Right, so the approach will be first, create the GL accounts in chart of account level. You have to create all these GL accounts in the chart of account level first. What is the chart of account level transaction code? FS?
P zero.
FSP zero. After that, you'll have to extend. Extend GLs at company code level. Where do you create GL at company code level?
FS O. FS S zero.
FS S zero or FS double zero?
FS S zero, sir.
FS S zero is where you are going to create GL at company code level. In short, tomorrow if somebody is asking you how you have created GL accounts in your previous project? Because this is a point which everybody mentions in your implementation project. You will tell, I did the baseline configuration, GL account, everything. When you talk about GL account, immediately you will get a question, how did you manage to create the GL accounts? Okay, if you get a question, how did you manage to create a GL accounts? If you are telling FS double zero gone, you have not worked on project. Because we are not going to use FS double zero to create GL account in any project. First thing that we will do is you will create all the GL accounts at chart of account level first. Later on, from chart of account, you will be extending it to the respective company codes. Now, when we know that there are twelve hundred GL accounts, is this practically possible to create these twelve hundred GL accounts manually, one by one? Is that what we are going to do in a project?
No, sir.
We are not going to create it manually. One is your manual creation. Second one is upload process. If you are in any project, you have to create the GL accounts or chart of account. Are you going to create manually, one by one, one thousand two hundred times? Or are you going to upload it one time, these one thousand two hundred GLs?
We will upload, sir.
We will be uploading these GL accounts in any project, this is what you are going to do. Now, manual process is not considered. Upload process is what we are going to use. Now, when you are using upload process, when you are using upload process, you have two ways. GL upload process in any implementation project. How we are going to upload this GL accounts? We are talking about any implementation project. How we are going to upload this GL accounts? What are the two ways that we have to upload GL master? First one is your LSMW. Second one?
LTMC.
LTMC. In which system we are going to use LSMW?
In ACC, sir.
This is used in ACC. And LTMC?
As for HANA.
This will be used in As for HANA. Now, LSMW is used in ECC and As for HANA also. In short, LSMW can be used in any system, but LTMC is As for HANA specific. Okay, in case you have decided to create the GL master using LSMW to create GL master with LSMW. What we need to do to create GL master with LSMW?
We have to render.
We need to record.
Create a record. My dictionary field, sir. Put it in Excel file and give it to client.
Do a recording for GL creation T code. All right, now second one, what you are going to do? Prepare and upload template and share with client. Third one, validate the data and convert the template into a flat file. In short, dot TXT. And upload. Because you are not going to share Notepad format to the client, Notepad format is nothing but flat file. You will be giving them in the Excel format. Your client will fill up all the information on the Excel format, they will send it back to you. You validate the data and then convert that Excel into Word format. You can just do save as, Excel into Notepad, sorry, not Notepad, Notepad, tab delimited. Then you will be able to upload, because in LSMW, we prefer to upload flat files. Now, in short, if you want to use LSMW, you have to do a recording of the transaction. Right, you need to do the
Yes, sir.
Recording of the transaction, it works similarly like a macro. The way it works in your Excel macro, in the similar way, your LSMW works. Whatever the steps that you have recorded, only those steps will get executed in this similar order. Anywhere if something is deviated, it will stop, it will give you an error message. You have to manually intervene and then fix whatever is missing. On the other side, to create GL master with LTMC. What we need to do to go to do LTMC approach? Should we need any recording here?
No, we need to download the template, right?
Template.
Here, we need to download the standard GL master template from LTMC. After downloading the template,
We have to fill in the name.
Share the template
Client.
With the client. Okay, and let's say you will receive the data from client. After receiving the data, how you are going to upload? Same thing, again you need to validate. You are not supposed to blindly upload whatever the data is given. You need to validate to ensure that the data is in the correct format, which can be uploaded in the system. If the format is wrong or any other parameters are wrong, you may face issues, errors while uploading. So to avoid these kind of things, you must validate the data. Let's say validate the data and we don't need to convert and upload in LTMC. Which one is easier? Creation of GL account in LSMW is easier or creation of GL account in LTMC is easier?
LTMC is easier.
LTMC, sir.
LTMC is easier, right? Now, you will be able to work on LTMC only if you are working on As for HANA project. Sometimes you may be working on ECC project also, there are lot of clients who are still on ECC. Okay, there is no guarantee that when you get into a job, you will be working on ECC environment or you will be working on As for HANA environment. But don't keep a point in your mind that As for HANA is different from ECC. Only from the technical perspective, there may be some differences from functional point of view. From functional point of view, let's say if you are talking from FICO point of view, eighty percent of whatever you have done on A C C is exactly the same on As for Hana. Except some minor changes, those are all negligible changes. Now, don't put that point in your mind that I am new to As for Hana, don't tell this to anybody. Okay, now, first thing that we'll have to do as part of our SAP configuration, after creating our baseline configuration, we are going to create our GL master data using two approaches. First, we will be creating our GL masters using LSMW. Wherein you will be understanding, you will be knowing how LSMW works and you will know how to create a recording, how to upload the data using LSMW. Second one, we will be creating some GL accounts with L T M C. We are not going to create GL account manually initially. First, we will decide on the Excel sheet what GL accounts we need, let's say we will list out around fifty sixty GL accounts. This fifty sixty we will split into two parts. Half GLs, we will keep it for LSMW upload. Half GL accounts, we will keep it for L T M C upload. And we will upload the GL accounts using both approaches. We will see how GL accounts are practically created. Later on, we are going to record the transactions. When it comes to GL, first activity is to create master data. GL master data is not manual activity, GL master data is upload activity, either LSMW or L T M C. Once your GL master is created, what next we will be doing? We will be posting the transactions.
Yes, sir.
Right, you will be posting transactions, when you post your transactions, are we posting transactions on a daily basis? Or are you accumulating the transactions and posting on a weekly basis? What happens in a day-to-day life?
Daily basis we can post.
Right, every organization will post their transactions on a daily basis, which means today whatever the transaction is happening, they will post today itself or they may have slight data lag. If you talk about data lag, if I say data lag is three days, what do I mean if I say data lag is three days? Normally, when we say this, we mean if a transaction is happening today, it might take up to three days to be recorded on the system. Right, so I will be running on three days data lag, which means if I am on twelfth of April, I may have posted all the entries up to ninth of April or up to eighth of April. After eighth, I may have not posted the entries because I have some data lag. This data lag is common in every organization, no company will record the transactions on a real-time basis except certain sales transaction, only the sales which is recorded on real-time basis. Otherwise, every transaction will have data lag. Because your transaction will go for approval, different, different things will be there. Okay, when you do this transaction posting, so from the transaction, now these are all part of your GL only. Before you use GL, you have to ensure that a transaction posting is working fine. And before you hand over system to the client, you have to bring all the opening balances into the system.
Yes.
Right, before we hand over the system to the client, we need to bring all the opening balances into SAP. So, when we talk about transaction posting, let's write two points. Initial balance upload or opening balance upload. This is one kind of a transaction posting in one implementation project. Second one, it will be day-to-day business transaction posting. Okay, first one is initial balance upload or opening balance upload. Second one is your day-to-day business transaction posting. When we talk about initial balance upload or opening balance upload, who will be doing this activity? Who will have to? So, this is consultant and who will post day-to-day business transactions? Users?
End users.
End users, sir.
Right, business users or end users. Now, initial balance upload, when you are doing, you will have to post the initial accounting interest manually or you will have to post using upload.
Manually.
Initial balance upload interest, opening balance, which means your trial balance interest. You need to bring your trial balance into SAP.
Uploading, sir.
We can upload.
Right? So, these entries are uploaded in SAP. Now, when we are talking about uploading in SAP, we may have different options. What are the options available to upload your initial balances into SAP?
Hmm, LSMW we can use, sir. Or L T M.
One is LSMW, second one? L T M C. There is one more thing. Correct, or you will use B D C.
B D C.
Out of these three, we will be using only two, not three. What are those two? LSMW can be used in?
B D C and Alkins.
Correct. This is LSMW is used both in A C C and in As for Hana. L T M C is exclusively As for Hana, B D C both in A C C and As for Hana. And LSMW for initial balance upload or for any transaction posting debit, credit accounting entries, LSMW not recommended. We will not recommend LSMW and we don't use it also. In the initial days, this was used, but but I have not used this anytime, I have not seen anybody using LSMW for GL balance upload. This was used in the older days, but not in the recent past. Currently, we don't use LSMW for GL postings. L T M C, this is used. B D C, this is used. In short, if you are working on A C C environment, you will be uploading any accounting document with the help of B D C. If you are working on As for Hana, you will be uploading with the help of L T M C. Correct? But not with LSMW, even if somebody is asking you, how did you upload your initial balances? How did you post the initial entries? Tell only these two. L T M C only if your project is related to As for Hana. Strictly B D C if your project is related to A C C. Okay, if you are on As for Hana, do not tell B D C, tell only L T M C. If you put B D C, you will get a cross question, why not L T M C? Why did you use L T M C? Sorry, why did you use B D C instead of L T M C? These kind of a cross questions will come and and these kind of a cross questions will come only when we are talking something which is irrelevant, which is not practical. Now, here, once we are on the transaction posting, first transaction we are not posting manually. First transaction we are posting with L T M C. Okay, B D C, we will not be able to do it because we do not have any programming upload template with us. But I will tell you how B D C works, how you will get B D C upload, how your B D C screen look like, everything I will show you. Okay, so this is your initial balance upload functionalities that you are going to do. In our first company code that we are creating, we are going to create a transaction posting with L T M C upload. I will show you how you are going to create LSMW, but not recommended. We don't need to practice this one, this is not going to be used. Now, once transaction posting is also completed, next thing is what? Reports. Okay, when we talk about reports, we will be talking about day-to-day reports. And you will be having monthly reports. And you may also have quarterly reports. And you may also have yearly reports. And you may also have audit reports. Now, what kind of reports are this basically? Now, from our, from our side, we should not think everything is a report. Even though it is a report, try to classify what kind of report it is and for what purpose these reports are used. If I want to talk about day-to-day reports, let's say I am an end user working in an organization wherein my task is to create, let's say I am an end user. Okay, I have to create one hundred and fifty documents daily. Now, I must know how many I have created so far, yes, no? Let's say my shift to timing is nine A M to six P M. I will start punching the data on the system at nine o'clock until six o'clock because I have to work from nine to six. Assuming I have posted till eleven thirty, I want to know at eleven thirty how many entries I have posted so far, how many more I need to post, possible? Should I be interested to know this or not? I don't want somebody to comment, tell me you, you achieved your target or you have not received your, you have not achieved your target. Now, as a user, I must have some flexibility, some functionality to check how many entries I have posted. Basic report to display a document. Okay, on a daily basis, what are the other reports that we may be looking for, we may be using? One is your document reports. You will be looking at GL balance report, GL transaction reports, correct?
Yes.
Your master data report, let's say I want to know what is the name of this particular GL account? I want to run the trial, I want to run the GL master list. How do I display all the GL accounts on my screen? Because it is not possible for us to remember all the GL account codes. So, you need to have a chart of account list with you. Every time you cannot search on the Excel sheet. Now, you need to have a report wherein you will be able to find GL accounts or the screen which will display all the GL accounts of your company code. Likewise, what kind of reports we will be using from day-to-day reporting perspective view, perfect perspective from GL side, similarly from monthly point of view, what kind of reports we are going to use?
Advance payment.
Okay?
Rent, rent schedule.
Correct? Now, here, when we talk about day-to-day reports, first we have to understand what normally happens in a day-to-day business from finance user point of view. From the accounting side, what will business users do on a daily basis? What kind of entries they will post? What kind of reports they extract, what kind of reconciliations they are doing? If you understand this, the similar way you are going to face the real environment when you are in any project. In any organization, finance users will do the similar activity. During their activity, they may need any assistance, they may need any help, they will approach you as a consultant. This is what you have to do, not all the time configuration, 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 it is only one time. You will only configure one time, the more focus that we have to put on is on the business process. Let's say tomorrow you are working for some X Y Z client and do not focus on your configuration, instead try to focus on your client business process. If you take a GL, what kind of entries they are posting on GL, what kind of reports they are extracting? Are they using any customized process, which means any Z related a transaction are they using for master record or for transaction or for report? If yes, what are those, why they are using it? Do we have any user manual for it? This is what you have to start working, this is what you have to start looking for once you join any project. If it is straightforward, if it is a standard functionality, you don't need anybody to explain you the process. Right, you will easily understand, okay, if you do this setting, this is how it works. In the similar way, it will work in any organization. But there are different things which are customized. When we say different things which are customized, certain processes may be any transaction, any master record, any report may be customized according to your client requirement. If it is a customized process, you may be finding some difficulty in understanding. Okay, when we say you may be having some difficulty in understanding, you are not sure why this screen is developed, for what purpose, where the data is getting stored, on what logic these, these things are happening. For that, you have to refer the initial documentation of that particular functionality like business process document if available, if not, look at the functional specification, if not, look at the user manual. Take the user manual, log into the test system, execute one cycle. Whatever is there on the user manual, just create it because tomorrow on the same process, you are going to receive queries. You are going to receive the issues or errors, am I correct? Whatever the customized process that your client is following, every user will follow the same process. And sometimes they might get errors while doing so, when they get errors, they will approach you. And when somebody is approaching, in order to help them, first we have to understand the process. If you are not clear with the process, it is difficult for us to help them. It is difficult for us to understand what exactly they are talking about. Okay, now, monthly reports we will have to see, quarterly reports you have to see, when you see quarterly reports, specifically you have to know about taxation reports. Because most of the companies will file their tax returns or taxes on a quarterly basis. For every three months interval, how many sales we have made, how many purchases we have made, what is the tax we have paid, what is the tax we have collected? What report is there on the SAP, only to the extent of this, you have to know. How taxes are filed, how returns are claimed and all is not our activity, is pure end user activity. But for end user to do it, what information he needs, what report we will be extracting from system, we have to understand. And yearly reports, what kind of yearly reports we will be extracting? And audit reports, audit report is nothing but your year-end audit, every company will have yearly audit, external audit. When external audit is happening for any organization, what kind of reports do they need? And what kind of a support you will provide as a consultant to the organization or to the external auditors? And first thing that you will be doing is you will be extracting the total transaction dump. Let's say you are in year twenty twenty-three. Now, what is your recent year-end yearly audit, external audit? In twenty twenty-three, which financial year auditing will happen?
Two thousand twenty-two.
Two thousand twenty-two audit. Now, when this two thousand twenty-two audit happens, your business will request certain data from the system from consultant's side. Because you need the transaction dump or you need any report of the full year. We will have to submit the complete transaction list to the auditor. From that complete transaction list, your auditor might pick any samples and ask you for supporting documentation or they might check in the system. Now, how we are going to extract the complete transaction dump for a fiscal year, for the financial year? Report will not give you this data, it will give you runtime error because every report will have some time. Every report will have some time. If there is no error in the report, but there is huge data on the background of the report, it will be set as like maximum fifteen minutes this report will run or maximum thirty minutes this report will run. If the program is able to. If the program is able to extract the total data within fifteen, fifteen minutes or within thirty minutes, whatever the time is maintained in the backend. Within that timeframe, if it is able to extract the data, it will give you output. If not, you will get a BAP runtime error. This is what happens when you are extracting any data. So you have to take the data from back in the tables, if you are taking data from tables, from which table you are going to extract the financial transaction dump or the completed transaction list for a fiscal year? Complete, let's say transaction list of a fiscal year. From where you will take, if you are on E C C, if you are on S four Hana? Okay, you will have to take it from table, okay, S is sixteen and in both, correct? Which table?
If it is G L related, uh S K A one, B K P F, Y N A ten. B F C C.
This is complete transaction list. So if you are on E C C, you will be taking from Fagel Flexa. Okay, if you are on S four Hana, what is the famous table name?
A C Doka.
A C Doka. Okay? Clearer? This is mandatory requirement for every Fico consultant in every year end. Because user cannot pull out this data, this data can be pulled out only by the consultant, only by Fico consultant. And we must know how this is done. Clearer? And there may be different, different activities that your auditors will ask. What kind of information your auditor is asking and how do you get that data from S A P? There may be a report for it, there may not be a report for it, if there is a report, you will ask user to run the report, get the data. If there is no report, you will have to prepare the data by extracting from the different, different tables and share it with the user. Okay, let's say for example, list of all import purchases. If you want to know list of all the import purchases, how do you extract it from the system? Now auditor will do financial auditing or logistics auditing?
Everything they will do.
So are they going to sit with the logistics team or are they going to sit with finance team?
They will sit with finance team now.
So auditors will always sit with finance team. Now, finance team will have to give all the import purchases, now any report that you are giving to the auditor must tally with the G L account. The data that you are providing must tally with the G L account related to it. So it's not that if I give you the dump, they will be okay with it, they will say this is your total import purchases. They will go to your financial statement, maybe trial balance, P N L balance sheet, they will check what is your import purchases value that you are showing on your financials, is your transaction list tallying to it? If not, they will tell there is a mismatch, the list that you are giving is not tallying with the financials that you have provided. Okay, you are showing that your import purchase is one lakh, but the dump that you have given is only eighty thousand, there is a mismatch of twenty thousand. Now, any information that is given to the auditor is very, very sensitive, is very, very what do you say? Some tricky point, when I said tricky point, if the data is going to the auditor from the user side, it is different story. If user had asked a consultant stating that we have to provide this information to the auditor. Now, as a consultant, you have just like that extracted the data, given the dump to the user. User also did not check, he had as it is forwarded to the auditor. Now, sometimes they, this file may come back stating values are not matching or asking for additional clarification, these details are missing, that information is missing. Again, they will come back to you, these kind of things are not supposed to happen, especially when you are supporting for audit. And this is common mandatory for every Fico consultant during every financial year closing. Okay, before you give anything to the business, anything to the user, always validate what you are sharing with them. Only the relevant information you share it with them, irrelevant information remove it. Especially when you take the data from tables, it will have the complete list. All the fields will be there on the data that you download?
Yes.
Yes, no? Now, don't share the dump as it is to the client. Now, when somebody is asking you based on their requirement, based on their designation, you will come to know for what purpose they are going to use it, if not, ask for them. Ask them for what purpose you need this information, do you have any specific format that this many fields or this information I want? Give only that information, remaining all you delete from the system, system in the sense, your file, whatever you download, remove the other files, keep only the files that are relevant, share it with them. Because on data entry, in short, on data entry, on transaction processing, as a consultant, you are not responsible. It is not your responsibility to involve on transaction data. Okay, it's pure business decision on what business process for what requirement they are going to pass the entry. Only your business user will come to know, as a consultant, we are not supposed to step in, we are not supposed to recommend to do this, to do that. Only if they face any challenges, issues while creating any transaction, while creating, while creating any report, while extracting any these ones, you will have to support, otherwise strictly you have to tell them to check with their superiors. Sometimes users will ask you to guide, I want to pass one entry, which G L account I should use? Now, are we supposed to tell as a consultant which is G L account to be used or no?
No sir, we are not.
As a consultant, you are not going to tell that use this G L account. Why you are not supposed to tell? Because it is not a consulting activity, it's a end user activity. While posting the transaction, if I am getting any problem, if I am getting any error, if I am getting any clarification, I can approach a Fico consultant, but not to guide me, not to train me on how to pass an entry, which is G L account I have to use, which vendor code, which tax code, not supposed to be recommended by you. Clearer? Now, there are, there is certain list of things that you will have to do as a consultant, there are certain things that you are not supposed to do as a consultant. But initially, when we join as a consultant, if we are not aware what things we will have to do, what things we will not have to do, we may end up doing everything whoever tells whatever, you will end up doing things. Correct, because we do not know whether we have to do it or no, because we are new to the organization, we are new to S A P Fico, we may work in a different way. But as long as that is relevant to your module, you can do it, if not, please do not do it, upfront you can tell that. If somebody is asking you to check a problem in purchase order creation. If you are aware, you just check, otherwise you don't check it, ask them to reach out to the M M consultant. Okay, you have to show your confidence the way you work. And these kind of things are common when you initially join in, join in any organization. Because we will not have a clarity on what needs to be done from your side, so you will end up doing everything that the other person is dictating. And don't give a chance to the other person to take you for granted. Clearer?
Yes sir.
Now, this is about your reports, so first thing that we are going to do on our company code is, we are going to do the baseline configuration, once baseline config is done, we are going to create G L master data using L S M W and using L T M C. Once this is done, we are going to use transaction data uploading using L T M C alone. And B D C, how we will do it, we will have theoretical overview session. After that, we will extract some basic reports. How do you display document with different, different conditions, with different, different parameter filters? How do you pull the G L line item report, G L balance report, what do we mean by drill down reports? From report, if I want to look at the base transaction, how will I go? Do we have any such drill down reporting in S A P? If yes, what are those reports? And then how do we plan the G L transactions, the amount, how am I going to plan? At profit center level, how do I plan my values, especially for my M I S purpose or P N L purpose? So these things we will be doing at the initial stage, once we do it at the initial stage, let's say we have created G L using L S M W, G L using L T M C, tomorrow, once we complete basic G L, we will be discussing, we will be talking about basic A P. When we do basic A P, your vendor master is again created using L T M C or L S M W, correct? Your vendor, again you have to do L S M W or L T M C, at that time, it will be easy for us to understand what we have done in G L for L S M W, same thing you are going to do for vendor L S M W. Similarly, the way you uploaded G Ls from L S, L T M C, on the other hand, on your vendor upload, you will have one, another L T M C upload template. For customer also, it is the same, for fixed asset also, it is the same. This is the first things that we have to understand when it comes to your initial data creation on any company code. After that, it's all about standard configuration, standard transaction posting that everybody does.
Sir, initially we will upload our master data, sir, starting.
Yes, any master data, it will be a huge volume.
Okay.
If you are talking about vendors, you may have
We will upload transaction data, right?
Correct, because without a transaction, master cannot be done. Now, here we have listed consulting work. In the same sequence, everything will happen in your S A P consulting. If you are talking about a transaction, before you come to transaction, there must be this master record available, there must be configuration done. Now, these two you will do based on the requirement. If there is no requirement, what will you configure? If I tell you to configure S A P company code, what are you going to configure? You will ask me what I need to configure? Yes, I have to tell you clearly what I want you to configure, which means I am giving you a requirement, in short, my requirement. Considering my requirement, you have to configure the system. After that, master records will be created and then transaction data is created. Finally, you are going to check the report to ensure all these above points are executed or are implemented correctly. Reporting will tell you the result. Now, this reporting result is possible only when you have proper business requirement. If you are posting without any requirement, just like that, for the purpose of practicing, the report will show some output, but you will not be able to judge that output is correct or not. Because we are not aware of what scenario we wanted to run. Okay, if you learn, if you keep points in this order, you don't have to learn everything in S A P Fico, everything falls under the same flow. Now, we do these processes for G L, when we do the similar process for A P, you will feel everything we are doing in the same manner, except G L A P, G L account, vendor account, G L transaction, vendor transaction, G L report, vendor record, that's it, nothing more. You will find all the similarities, the way you work is the same. When you go to accounts receivable, same thing again. You created G L account, you created vendor account, you will create customer account. You posted G L entries, you posted vendor entries, you are going to post customer entries. G L report, vendor report, customer report, you will not find any such major differences. Everything will fall under same category, you will feel like doing the same thing repeatedly but different approach. Your data is changing but the way you are working is not changing. The way you are going to think is not going to change. And if you work, if you practice in this way, when you go and work in any organization for any project, you will not find any difficulty. Any situation comes, you will be able to manage easily, you will not get scared, you will not get afraid. Because this is what you are going to do when you are in a project. Nothing extra than this, nothing less than this. Right, from organization to organization, from company to company, client to client, project to project, the way we work may differ, but the concept remains the same. The way you document, the way you configure, maybe slight differences, but from the process point of view, from the consulting point of view, it is the same. So that is why you have to be flexible to mount according to the project, according to the client requirement. Don't stick to one point that, okay, this is how a consultant works, consultant will have to be flexible. Only in one way end user works. But you are not going to work in one way, you have to be more flexible. Adopt any kind of situation, work in any environment. Even if there is nobody, if somebody says you have to work from client location, from tomorrow onwards, you are not going to come to office, you please go and report in the client office, work directly with the users, don't get scared. In fact, you have to be more happy to work like that. You will get to know lot of things, you will learn a lot of things there. But mostly we will get scared, there is nothing to get scared. All you need to do is show your confidence level, that's it, nobody is going to expect you to solve their problem on the same day or on immediate basis, nobody will expect you. When this is the reality, there is no point of getting scared of it. First, try to listen to what the other person is telling. Let the other person complete what problem they are facing, half of the solution, the way they are explaining will tell you. Let's say I am telling you that I am having some problem in one of the processes. Now, am I going to tell you only that one line problem? Or am I going to tell you what I am doing and where I am getting problem? What will happen in general?
You will explain in deeper, sir.
Right, any user, any client, any business process owner will explain you the complete process at high level. To do this process, we are going to follow these many steps or this is what we are doing, at this level, we are having some issue. Now, when you understand that, when you understand that, when you see it in the system, when they explain, you will come to know half of the thing what is actually happening, when you see it on S A P, you will get to know another half thing. So automatically you will be able to talk what they are intend to expect from you. But it is only possible the way you are extracting the information from your user, it is your responsibility, that is your consulting skill. Don't expect the other person will tell you everything. Some users will not tell everything, they will only send you error screenshot, they will ask you please fix it. Same error will come for ten reasons in S A P, same error message, same code, for ten different reasons, the same message will come. Unless you get to know what they are doing, will we be able to understand, solve the problem easily? No, yes?
Not sir.
No, so what you have to do, you have to interact with the client, talk to the client or have a chat with the client, ask them to share their screen or double click on that error message, share the error message number. What they are trying to pass, what entry you are posting, what, which accounts you are using, all these things you ask them. Nothing wrong in this, in fact, when you ask all these kind of questions, the other person feels that, okay, you understood what my problem is. Sometimes if you, if I say I am getting this problem, okay, I got it, I understood. But his scenario may be different. All these days they have been using, there is no problem, why there is a problem suddenly, then something is wrong? Right, every day they are using it, but nobody came to me every day, but first, for the first time or from the last couple of days, people are complaining, stating that these issues are coming, why these problems are coming all of a sudden? Try to understand it, try to investigate. Try to understand it, try to investigate, you try to post a certain entries on the test system. If everything is working in test system, check what the user is doing actually, are they following the correct process or not? And if you are able to go to at this level, it's easy for you to manage in any project, you will not suffer anywhere. And for any configuration related thing, for any issue related thing, you will have sufficient time to handle. Nothing is urgent, nothing is immediate, everything will wait. But how you are conveying that matters. Everybody will wait for the reasons that you are giving, for the justifications that you are providing. Clearer? So what we will do, we will start basic configuration from tomorrow morning session onwards, we will create one company code, all the baseline configurations and within two days, we will complete, not two days, three days. So day one, we are going to complete seventy to eighty percent of the baseline configuration. Day two, remaining baseline configuration plus master data creation. Day three, we are going to create a transaction. So in short, in the three sessions, we are going to complete one test company code creation, master data upload, transaction data upload, basic report generation, clear?
Yes sir.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so alright then, so evening we will be connecting at the same time, we will discuss the same thing again. And our regular classes will be in the morning only, seven thirty AM, we will be continuing the same points that we are discussing here. Okay, when we have a session in the evening, it will not be continued, continuation of this, it will be the similar thing of this. Okay?
Sir.
Okay.
Hello sir.
Yeah.
Uh, sir, if a person is showing his client in the interview, having twenty company codes, then if an interviewer asks that how many GLs you had in your, like for that client, then what will be the answer?
You will always tell that at chart of account level, don't exceed beyond three thousand, tell somewhere around one thousand to three thousand. Any number is fine, above thousand, below three thousand. At chart of account level, for a company code, again you tell anything above thousand to two thousand.
Okay sir.
Okay, tell at chart of account level. One minute, let me stop this recording.